Good evening, welcome to the December 5th, 2018, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present tonight, so we'll call the meeting to order. We have six public hearings on the agenda tonight, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately 24.2 acres located along Medical Center Parkway to be rezoned from GDO 1 to GDO 3, the city of Murfreesboro and Swanson Development, are the applicants. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider a zoning change request to the overlay zone for property that's located along Medical Center Parkway. It's just across from Searcy Street and Warren Street. The property does run along the west fork of the Stones River and Old Fort Golf Course, and so it does back up to that. Between this property and the golf course is a portion of property that is currently zoned RS15 or it will remain that way. The base zone for this property is MU, that's our mixed-use zoning district. It's not being proposed to be changed at all, just the overlay zone. And the reason the city is contemplating rezoning this from GDO 1 to GDO 3 is that the GDO 3 overlay is consistent with other city-owned properties, and those properties are generally reviewed by the DRC. So because this is city-owned, or was previously city-owned, because you'll notice that Mr. Swanson is an applicant, he's recently purchased the property, we want to make sure that this was consistent with the rest of the properties. In this area, there's currently a fire station under development. I think it's almost complete. I don't believe they've gotten their CBO, but the construction is nearly complete, so that may help you familiarize yourself with the location of the property. I did include additional materials in your packet that show you what uses are, there are additional uses that are prohibited in the GDO 3 district as a principal use, and so that is the primary difference between GDO 1 and GDO 3. And there are some differences in the maximum height limitations, but of course, this would be consistent with other city-owned properties. You should conduct a public hearing, after which formulate a recommendation to City Council regarding the zoning change request.
Any questions? Okay, before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. When I open the public hearing, you'll be invited to come forward to speak. Please come to the podium, state clearly your name, and give your address for the record, if you would. Keep your comments or questions to none more than three minutes. If you do have questions, the staff make a note of those questions, and we'll try to answer those at the conclusion of the public hearing. That being said, I'll open the public hearing on this matter at this time, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Mr. Swanson, you don't want to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments by members of the planning commission? If none, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Second public hearing is mandatory referral and right-of-way abandonment to consider the abandonment of an alley north of Jackson Street. Charlie Ferrer is the applicant. Ms. Tomlin, good evening.
Good evening. This is a right-of-way abandonment. It is about 10 feet wide and approximately 105 feet long. This right-of-way was recorded in 1947. Mr. Charlie Ferrer owns two of the lots adjacent to this. He wants to incorporate those into his property. Two of the lots in the back on the original plat, lots four and five, would become non-conforming, so one of our conditions of approval is that he would have to submit a plat and create one lot from all of that, so that they would all have public road frontage. You need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation for the City Council, and there are four conditions that staff would recommend, one being the applicant should be required to submit the necessary documents to the legal department, required to draft the quitclaim deed. The applicant shall be responsible for reporting the quitclaim deed. The abandoned right-of-way shall be incorporated into the existing parcels via subdivision plat reported at the Register of Deeds office. The subdivision plat shall combine lots four and five with lot six or lot three in order to avoid creating any illegal lots of record, and utility easements, including an easement for Atmos Energy, shall be retained as needed to accommodate existing and proposed utilities.
Okay. Any questions?
Just so I understand clearly, just to the east of the property that we're considering, there's a property that will be created, an island, by this. Is it, my understanding is you just said that Mr. Ferrer owns both of these properties, so he would be able to make one lot out of those?
Right. Lots four and five on the original, you have this.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, he owns both of those, and that is the condition, that he would create one lot out of all of those.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no further questions or comments by the planning commission, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, if I could just add one more thing on this. Mr. Ferrer made the request, and he owns the two parcels, as Mr. Smotherman alluded to, on the east side of the existing alley right-of-way. There are two property owners on the west side of the existing alley right-of-way. We don't know if they have any interest in acquiring half of the right-of-way, or if they would even care if Mr. Ferrer received the entire right-of-way. So what we would propose to do would be not to take this to City Council until we have some resolution as to when, or as to how it would be, how the right-of-way would be distributed to the parties. But with that being said, the planning commission is just tasked with determining if it is excess right-of-way, and if there's any need for the city to keep it as right-of-way. So there's no issue in you moving forward with the motion tonight. We would just hold off on bringing it to the City Council until we had some resolution as to how to divide the right-of-way.
Okay.
If you were to vote to recommend approval.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve, subject to all conditions that were noted this evening.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item C is a zoning application to amend the Sunset Ridge PRD to allow front-entry garages on three lots, approximately .58 acres, located along Sunray Drive. Chip Lloyd is the applicant. Ms. Tomlin.
Good evening again, this is me again. This, there are three lots in the subdivision of the entranceway. All of the lots are required to have the interior, internal access garages. That street is completely developed with internal access garages, however, the rest of the neighborhood does have the side entry. This, these three lots really line up with the side-entry garage homes more than the ones on the entrance street, and so he is asking for these to be released from that commitment, that they can have the side entry instead of the internal access garages. There's no change to density or materials or anything, it's just simply a front-entry garage.
Any questions?
When you say "internal access garage," do you mean a side-entry garage?
It's a side-entry, that's just how it's noted in the PRD.
Ms. Jones, it would be what we would normally, or what we would more commonly consider a courtyard-style entry garage with the snout house, so to speak, but instead of it being a front-entry garage door, it would curve around to the side. So he's looking to replace the courtyard-style with front-entry garages on those three lots.
Okay, any other questions? I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name is Chip Lloyd. 1980 Old Fort Parkway. We've developed pieces and parts of this development. We didn't do it all originally from the beginning, and we have been building houses down the street, and we have the front-entry garages. The lots are 50 feet wide, so they're really tight. So in order to do a courtyard-style home, you have to pull to the front door and then turn immediately to get into the garage, which is almost impossible on a 50-foot lot. So basically what we're asking, we have to use brick or hardy plank on, you know, predominantly the whole entire home. We're not looking to change any square footage, materials, et cetera, but to do the front-entry garage, which would basically match everything else that's on the street there. And went over all this with the planning commissioner, or the planners, et cetera, and they didn't seem to have a big problem with it, so if it's okay with you guys, we sure would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions by members of the planning commission? If none, we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item D is a zoning application for approximately 18.7 acres located along Veterans Parkway and Kingdom Drive to be rezoned from RS15 to commercial local, to commercial fringe. Swanson Development's LP is the applicant. Ms. Rush.
Good evening, commissioners. The property is located in the vicinity of Veterans Parkway and Kingdom Drive. A portion of the property is located along the west side of Veterans Parkway. The remaining portion is along the east side, as well along the north side of Kingdom Drive, and then along the south side of Kingdom Drive. The requested rezoning to commercial fringe, CF, is to allow for commercial development to occur along this major arterial road. The adjacent zoning of the other properties in the near vicinity includes RS15, single-family residential, and RM16 to the north, multifamily residential. RS15 and planned unit development to the east, and there are unincorporated properties located to the west and south. The adjacent land uses are single-family residences along Veterans Parkway, as well as overall Creek Elementary School is to the northeast, and the Kingdom Ridge Single-Family Residential subdivision is located to the east. The future land use map, the Murfrees 2035 Comprehensive Plan recommends that the property is neighborhood commercial for the portions that are located along the east side of Veterans Parkway. The portion that's located along the west side, the future land use map does recommend that this would be suburban residential. The requested rezoning would not be consistent with suburban residential, but it would be consistent with the neighborhood commercial. Therefore, the planning commission would need to discuss this aspect of the change and determine whether or not that this change would be warranted for this particular property. The applicant will be available at the planning commission here to answer any questions following the public hearing. The commission will need to discuss this matter and make a recommendation to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. Any questions of Ms. Rush? None, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward to speak that would like to come up.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, commissioners and staff, Joe Swanson, 1188 Park Avenue. One of the reasons we are seeking rezoning here, or zoning, and I patented out some pictures earlier, is you'll see on this particular piece of property, there's about 60 feet of elevation difference in about 520 feet. If I can put that in another term, if you were going to build a house on this, you'd have one side of the house at three-block high, the other side would be 10-foot on a 40-foot wide house. So it would be very difficult to build residential on this home, or on this property. Also, considering that ADA is 1%, that grade is about a little over a 10% grade increase. So I would like or appreciate your vote in favor of this zoning. I'll be available for any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the planning commission? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item E is a zoning application for approximately 1.96 acres located along Veterans Parkway to be rezoned from RS15 to PRD, which is Kingdom Crest Clubhouse PRD. Swanson Development's LP is the applicant. Ms. Rush.
Thank you. The current property is adjacent to the previous one that we just reviewed. It's located along the east side of Veterans Parkway, north of Kingdom Drive. The property is approximately two acres in size and is presently zoned RS15, single-family residential. The developer is requesting to rezone the parcel to planned residential development in order to construct a clubhouse that would be associated with the development of a multifamily residential complex on the adjoining property to the east. If the rezoning request is approved, the subject property would need to be combined with the land that would be zoned, that is zoned RM16 through a subdivision plat, so that the amenity area would be located on the same lot of record. The Kingdom Crest Clubhouse pattern book shows that there's a two-story building, approximately 6200 square feet, as well as some amenities, including a pool, grilling area, and associated parking. The adjacent zoning and land uses in the vicinity, again, are multifamily residential to the east, single-family residential to the north, south, and west, and commercial to the south. There are some single-family homes contiguous to the property, as well as Fellowship Bible Church is located to the north, and single-family residential Kingdom Crest subdivision as well to the north. The future land use map, Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan recommends public institutional as the most appropriate land use for the subject property. This is most likely due to when the future land use map was developed for the Murfreesboro 2035 a few years ago. The property at that time was owned by the Fellowship Bible Church, and then the ownership of the property has obviously changed, and is probably, at that time, the basis for the future land use designation. Churches are classified as an institutional use in the Murfreesboro zoning ordinance. The proposed zoning for the pattern book, planned residential development for the clubhouse, is not consistent, therefore, the planning commission will need to consider whether or not this is an appropriate zoning for this particular area. The applicant will be making a presentation to provide more details on the pattern book. Following the closing of the public hearing, the planning commission will need to conduct, will need to discuss this matter and formulate a recommendation to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, okay. Never mind.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, planning commissioners, and city staff, and public participants in the meeting. My name is Kevin Gunther with Reagan Smith. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to present this proposed rezoning to planned residential development. I appreciate Ms. Rush's presentation. I think she covered most of the ground, but I did want to touch on just a few things. For one, this planned residential development is not going to alter the multifamily piece, either in acreage or density, that we're adjoining. So that is a separate piece of property entitled for the existing multifamily. We're not proposing any changes to that parcel. The other thing is that, if you see in your pattern book, I think an important aspect of what we're proposing is to create an entrance off of Veterans Parkway for this multifamily. I think that's an important development in that this is going to reduce a lot of your traffic down along the school. This is going to reduce a lot of traffic on the local roads that'll be serving the community that are off those local roads. So we feel this is allowing for an improved circulation pattern, and improved access to the property that would better serve the overall community, and reduce traffic in the school zone. In addition, even though this property is shown as the institutional public use in the long-range plan, as Ms. Rush had pointed out, that is really due to the fact that the church owned this when that process was underway. Well, things have changed, and the church developed their site. When the plat was done for this particular, for the church property, it was noted that this piece would be held for future development, and is not really part of the church's plans. So that's something that I think is, has changed quite a bit, and in light of the fact that this parcel is adjoining in, as far as the comprehensive plan goes, proposed use for commercial to the north and the south, and multifamily to the east, I would propose that really our intended use is not in conflict with the overall comprehensive plan. The other thing I think is important about this is, as you see in the pattern books, being a planned residential development, this does ensure some quality of architecture, quality of layout, and we're proposing a type-D buffer line on each side of the property adjacent to the parcels to the north and south. So with this rezoning, there is a certain commitment that is not there now to a certain type of architecture. That architecture is two-story, more residential in detailing, will be a wraparound porch with window details, and we think is well-suited to fit into the neighborhood. If all went as planned, Mid-South Development would be proposing to bring a site plan to you for review sometime in early spring, possibly March or April. That would kind of fit into part of the purpose of this rezoning. So with that, I will be happy to answer questions. Mr. Swanson is here as well, and we look forward to any questions or information that you need.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Chairman Lamb, commission staff, just a few other little tidbits about this. The church came to us when I was developing Jack Byrne's Drive, that was an extension of the drive at the school. As a part of me bringing them sewer, I traded that for this parcel. At that time, I went to Joseph, and we discussed that his preference at that time would be that if there was a way that I could make these two parcels marry together, it would keep that traffic off the school street, which would be a benefit for the children and the community. Okay? I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Okay, any questions from the planning commission? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing.
One question. I mean, do we normally have the, like, colors or materials, or, I mean, I realize we're going to have brick and concrete siding. Would that normally have been in the plan book? Or was that something y'all approved when it comes through, or do they just, I mean, they're building according to this plan book, so?
I think we can certainly have them to provide us color elevations prior to City Council, if you wish to move this forward tonight.
Not that I would expect them to do anything, but you know, if they were to sell this to somebody else that maybe we don't know, and we wouldn't want to know what the color, I just think we need to.
Yes, ma'am, I agree. I think that would be a good, a good thing to have in there.
Okay.
One question for me.
Yes, sir.
Coming off of Veterans Parkway, will this property have a turn lane going into it, or a turn lane coming out?
It'd be required by the state, I would say, but coming off of, talk about a right turn in and left turn in off of 96.
Well, the entrance will actually be off Veterans Parkway, which is a city street. Mr. Huddleston may wish to speak to what type of road improvements might be required.
He'd love to.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the planning commission. Veterans Parkway is an existing five-lane curb-and-gutter road through here, so it would have a center-turn lane that would accommodate a left turn in. Likely, at this location, a right turn would not be warranted because of the ability to turn right earlier on Kingdom Drive and come through the back way. Doesn't look like the right-turn volumes would warrant a dedicated right turn here, and so that'd be my opinion on it, based on what I see here today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Mr. Russell, did that answer your question, okay?
It did. I was just thinking, in terms of if you're taking volume off the city streets, then you would expect the volume to go through that.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
I'll just make a comment. I had a parent, when they found out that there's going to be multifamily next to the school, they made a comment to me about the whole, the traffic there is already bad going in and out, so I think this is a great remedy of getting the traffic out of this complex in a different direction. So, kudos to Joseph or whoever else came up with that idea years ago.
Good comment, Ken. Anybody else?
Entry gate that's showing on the plans, is that something that would be keypad entry, or how does the entry gate work?
Ms. Rush or Mr. Gunther, either of y'all care to answer that?
That's something that we will have to visit with the site plan. I know that Mid-South Development is interested in gating the entrance, but honestly, I don't know that that detail has been concluded at this stage.
That answer your question, Ed?
Yeah, kind of it is.
That's what it is. Thanks. Okay, any other questions? If there are none, we're ready for a motion.
I mean, I really think this would be a good neighbor to have, even if you did have residential right beside it. I think it's an attractive project. I would request that if you go forward with this to the council, let you provide some type of materials forward, so that we'll have some idea of what the construction is. I think Kathy's got a very good point. Having said that, I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Final public hearing this evening is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, Chart 1 in notes, uses permitted by zoning district pertaining to multiple family residential uses in the MU zoning district. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Who wants this one?
Mr. Anthony.
I guess I'll take it.
Okay. There's nobody's name on here, you get it by default.
We talked about this one, I think, a couple of times before, most recently at the November 15th day meeting, so it won't belabor the point too much, but the purpose of the amendment is to ensure that projects in the MU zone include a mix of land uses, and that the MU district doesn't simply become sort of a de facto multifamily zoning district. Multifamily should be a component, or could be a component, but we think should not constitute the entirety of any property.
Right.
Right, right. So with this, we propose establishing ratios for the portion of an MU zone property that can be set aside for multifamily residential uses. For developments consisting of 10 or more acres, no more than 25% of developable land area could be designated for multifamily. For developments of fewer than 10 acres, no more than 50% of developable land area could be designated for multifamily. could be designated for multifamily. And as I discussed last time, we did go back and define developable land area in this ordinance. So it's defined as any land not constrained by natural resources, features, or barriers, historically significant areas or structures, or overhead or underground transmission lines or easements. That definition is exclusive to this particular note, that terminology is used elsewhere, I think, in the zoning ordinance, but that definition is specific to here. Planning commission should conduct a public hearing and then afterwards make a recommendation to the city council, and we can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions?
So can we just, so it's clear in my mind, I heard what you said, the definition, but if you have stormwater requirements associated with that land, how does that come into play, if any, with respects to that definition?
I think that those should be taken into account. I don't think that those types of areas would be excluded from developable land area because there are, you don't have to utilize a large portion of your land for stormwater control always. There are methods where you can go underground and so forth.
I'm with you.
Okay, that makes sense.
Any other questions?
Mr. Anthony, will you explain a little bit of the rationale and the reasoning of how we came to this formula?
We came to it, we've dealt with a couple of properties, particularly over the last few months, that were originally presented to the city as mixed-use, with apartments constituting only a portion. And on at least one of those that we're still working with, the applicant has come back and really their entire mixed-use development now is multifamily housing. And so the one thing that we've heard repeatedly from our city leaders and city council and even the planning commission here is that, you know, we want to maintain our gateway as being a true mixed-use center and not letting multifamily uses sort of overwhelm the gateway. And so that's how we came to this and brought it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any further comments?
I'll just make a comment. I'm glad that we've gone through this exercise. The application, I think, that you were speaking of earlier caused me some pain because I felt like we were changing the plan midstream. However, by right, they had the ability to do so. And so I'm very pleased that we are defining it and we've come up with the requirements associated with it. So it's not just a mixed-use and they can change the plan as they so think they can, I guess is the best way.
Well, I think that's well put and, you know, as good as the staff does their jobs on formulating new codes and new divisions in our zoning ordinance, obviously times come where we need to tweak the language in there because that was not the intent on the front end.
Right.
So thank you guys for your work, I appreciate it. Any other comments? Mr. Halliburton, you want to follow that up with a motion?
Make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That completes our public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. Staff reports and other business, Mr. Anthony.
This is our very last seven o'clock nighttime meeting, starting next month, six o'clock.
Starting in January, we will meet at 6:00 PM Central Standard Time. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned. Oops, sorry, you're too late. We're adjourned. Mr. Blomley, do you need me to reconvene the meeting?
I will email all of you, as I am wont to do, so I will. No, just an update on.
Continuing ed?
Continuing ed, I put that in front of you for your reference. And also, I will email you out as a reminder of the dates for the 2019 planning commission meeting.
Okay, we still are adjourned.